I'm going to call the meeting to order. All members are accounted for besides Jill Lynn, she's going to be absent tonight. I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, in the name of the Lord.
Alright, Jeff, I don't have any additions to the agenda, do you?
No, the ones that we needed to add.
They are on there?
They're already on there.
Yep. Alright, I will look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make a motion.
Pete on the motion.
I'll second.
Ronde on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We have no scheduled presenters tonight, so we'll move right into reports and communication. We don't have a student board rep here tonight, so we'll go on to board committee reports. Anyone have anything they'd like to add?
Okay, I'll just say one thing, we had a facility meeting quickly. We just discussed doing some updates to the JV softball field. Those were already completed and for the most part, just a couple things to work on here. And we just talked about a few budgetary reduction items. That was the only committee meeting that I had.
We just had our WeTech one last week, that was more organizational getting ready. Aarons is going to be pretty busy this summer, or this school year. It was busy this summer, it's going to continue in the school year, so no actual items to independent districts. Sounds like there may be some additional schools that would want to potentially join the WeTech, so from a funding perspective, that'd be helpful. So Aarons is more going to do that. Potentially come to the board for us to review and what kind of would be structures. Two to three may change all that board structure, so. Good thing for the WeTech group, as the rates are going up significantly, because schools are looking at independent contract out some of the technology deployments, so could be a good thing. Sure, raise some additional points, but should hear from that at the next board meeting, which I think is in September.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Alright, move on to administrative board reports. Mr. Strauss, is there anything that you would like to add for elementary?
Nothing in particular, just all the back-to-school stuff today with teachers, it was great. It was fun having the building busy again with staff. It's been trickling in over the last few weeks, you know, getting some things done. It was fun to have everybody on hand today. Had a lunch together in the cafeteria and then, yeah, just some trainings, getting some things done. Tomorrow we got almost all day of Amplify Training, that's our new reading curriculum, K through five, that we're implementing. Yeah, looking forward to the year getting going, and things are good.
Alright, thank you. Middle school, high school, technology, Tim?
Same thing, we have, I guess, a medium-sized group of new staff in on Friday, so it's great to have everybody, and great to be fully staffed.
How many?
Two from my building and how many did with long-term subs?
Long-term subs.
You have five?
Five.
Yeah, so about seven total.
Six.
Including a new EL teacher who we're sharing with Kenny Wannamingo again, I think she's .6 here, .4 there. It was good to see staff back today. We had a good, you know, back-to-school staff meeting. I think I haven't really changed my back-to-school meeting much in the last few years, because it's just kind of stuff that we need to review and talk over again. But we're really happy with some initial MCA results, especially for reading and math. We're still waiting on our science results, but reading especially in the middle school, high school was really, really good this year, so we're really happy with that.
Just one other thing to add too, and Tim and I have talked a bunch about this. Shout out to Stephen and his whole crew.
Yes.
The building's just phenomenal, the work that they do. I told my staff today we should do a time-lapse video of a hallway, just all the stuff they take out, clean everything, get back in, you know, in the room. It's incredible what they do, so shout out to them.
Alright, Reed's not here tonight, so then, the man of the hour, what do you have to say?
Well, Reed, so it is busy. It's a lot more than I anticipated, after, you know, just coming into this job, seeing how it's done.
Yep.
It's a lot more than what people actually see, what happens, you know. They come in to see the shiny floors and they see the dull floors and that they see. But my job as a manager is to keep all that stuff going, and my crew has just been non-stop, just kind of rolling into the next one. And I got some new people up there, and it helps to have that veteran staff, Josh down at the elementary, to help out with all that. So shout out to him, shout out to Bruce. They've been really stepping in and kind of, you know, making sure we're not failing for my first fall here, so. Yeah, other than that, we've been, you know, kids are back in here doing sports, they got practices going on inside and outside now, so I got to get used to that too, you know, I came in the winter months, so it was all.
Right.
And then it's all baseball outside of that, so I don't got too much going on in the school after basketball's done with. So it's a new fall for me, to the job, to everything around here, but shout out to you guys on that field. You don't know how much that takes off of my plate as well, so all the community members that volunteered for that. I know Mike was there, Doug out there with the skid loader, so shout out to them too for that. It's a lot for a community to have people like that behind them, so. Other than that, ready for more chaos today, it was pretty chaotic with the wants and, you know, the needs and, you know, so it was, it was a good, fresh day.
When does regular school session scheduling start for that custodian? Like, when do those shifts?
They're back to those.
They're back to those?
They're back to those last week.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so we generally do, like I said, those veteran people have let me know how to do it, so.
Sure.
They're back to that regular schedule last week, so we got night staff on right now and day staff, so we're ready for it.
And when's the roof repair coming up?
The fourth, so I have a meeting on Wednesday with our Garland rep, and he's going to kind of go through the whole pre-meeting with it, with the contractor, me, him, so.
And that's supposed to hopefully get approved fairly quickly.
Twelve days, they said.
And they're?
Weather dependent, so let's hope for some nice weather.
And around the weekend and lights?
Yep, they're just going to go, so.
Perfect.
Yep.
So the community should know that it's okay if there's lights going on, action.
It's okay if there's, yep, noise up here, because most of the work's going to be getting done evening. I mean, they're going to shut down at a decent time, obviously, we're in city limits, so.
Sure.
But I can't tell you that until I have that meeting with them on Wednesday.
Yep.
Yep, so.
Perfect.
Are you guys fully staffed?
We are still missing, kind of retrofitting it a little bit around here, seeing what we can do and can't do with the staffing that I've had. I've been short since I got here, so kind of trying to do that and, you know, help us out budget-wise with that as well, but also not being short-staffed, making people grind. So I am still actively seeking part-time possibly on the position, but I think I'm going to roll one of my positions, and that's part-time right now, I'm going to do a permanent position.
Okay.
People-wise, so, yep.
Alright, we'll move on to soup's report.
I will echo what Tim and Stephen talked about, with Stephen's crew as well, just highly impressed, especially with you being in your first year and with a newer crew getting everything rolled around, and that was great to see. It's great to see staff back in the building again today and creating a lot of energy, and obviously there's more energy to come next week when the students arrive, so highly anticipating that. Other than that, I just have my agenda items as presented on the report, unless you guys have questions.
Alright, anything for Jeff? Alright, we'll move on to public input. Anyone here like to speak to the board? Alright, we'll close public input. Consideration to approve the finance report. Josh, take it away.
So you've got the cash flow worksheet there, and kind of fix up what happens in the summer as we kind of close out the last supposed to be year and get ready for the new one. In terms of what goes on on a daily basis through cash flow, nothing real exciting. August 15th is generally kind of the first big payment for the ideas as it comes through, but of note, unless the technical report would be midway through that listing, as Stephen has talked about, the roof payment. Part of the cash that's in that cash flow analysis includes those funds available for the roof project that will go out, assuming that everything goes well with the roof and the applications are put in and then correctly, we'll be looking at about September 30th making that payment on the roof. And then, a little further down in the end of October, beginning of November, would be the second half of property tax. That's, you see a shift in the ideas funds, you know, less from the state and more from the county, as I have said for that, but really in the timeframe of this report, those are kind of highlights. In the office, obviously, we've got cash flow through the entire fiscal year, and we're good in terms of cash, not having any borrowing, which is a plus for the district, but if there are any questions on this, I can sure do my best to answer for you.
You say that's the final from the county, or the cleanup one comes a little bit later?
Yeah, so there are a couple different types of times. So the second half of property tax usually comes in two payments, one at the end of October and one coming in November, and then there's usually a cleanup sometime in December of that last kind of calendar year part of it. The big kind of cleanup really is, for district-wide in terms of our fiscal year, how we tie it out, happens during audit time, and this is in the summer. But, yeah, there are several payments that come in the end of the calendar year that all tie in at second property tax payment for people.
Any questions for Josh? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the finance report. I'll move to approve. Luke on the motion. Julie on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion, and the event a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Jeff, would you mind reading the resolution for acceptance of gifts, please?
Absolutely. The first item is a donor from the city of Cannon Falls, from the city, not from a donor, from the city of Cannon Falls, partnership with the city for tree removal, to take down to the dumps the trees that we removed around the district property, 17 trees.
Yep.
Quite a bit of refuse, and the city did a great job and allowed us to take the trees down there for no cost at this time. The estimated value is kind of hard to put a number on, but we do thank them for allowing us to do that. Cannon Cruisers Car Club, $500 for the tennis team, and $550.99 from the Ed Foundation for Character Development Curriculum for PK through five for Mrs. Stark, and we do thank our donations, our donors for this month.
And I believe on that Cannon Cruisers ones, it was the tennis team that helped park all the cars for their car show, so they did a great job doing that.
Yeah, that was a good idea, something different than the standard, you know, asking for money, you know, donations.
Correct.
I had a question on the tree removal, so did the city cut them and remove them, or?
No, there was an independent contractor that did the tree removal, but the city hasn't been allowing contractors to dump trees down at the dumps, so it was very kind of them to allow us to be able to do that.
Alright, anyone have anything on the personnel items or monthly bills that they want to take out, look at, or the minutes? If not, I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll move to approve. Luke on the motion, Pete on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Action items, moving on to new business. Consideration to approve the dollar amount for fiscal year '27 reductions.
Back in July, the board approved administration to bring back any cuts for not this fiscal year, but it would be for the fiscal year beginning next July 1st. We talked through that at that time, saying it would be important to get the cuts actually out ahead of people starting to vote on September 19th. And so the process is, is that you guys have to direct us to bring back a number to begin with, and that's what we're going to do tonight, and then the second agenda item, I can talk a little bit more about what that means after the board decides on a number for us to aim for, for items to bring back in September. Administratively, we sat down and talked through what a number would look like at this time of the year. Normally, we don't come up with those types of numbers until February or March, so right now, we're throwing at a very, it's basically a dartboard of, we need to have some sort of justification for it, and obviously, school districts are funded through the number of students that come to school for them. We also have to account for recent legislative changes, meaning this past year with paid FMLA, unemployment payments are still around in the summertime. There was an increase to the teachers' TRA piece that we had to account for. There was insurance increases, and I'm sure I'm missing a few of the mandate pieces. Inflation was also accounted for in the supply areas for costs and for gas electricity, utilities, thank you, couldn't think of the word. We also have to count for the one-time cut that we made last year into this year, which is the $150,000 bus purchase. We need to keep buying buses. And then we also need to account for the compensatory dollars that the governor decided to have a one-year reprieve and keep, in our case, the district had $100,000 of compensatory dollars, kind of a whole harmless, and at this point, we can't assume that that'll be around next year, because everything that I've seen moving forward, if it goes through with a plan that they want to put in, it would be a $100,000 reduction in compensatory. And so, Josh, did I miss anything off of what we had talked about?
No, I think the last one, that's where we go, was exactly how to put a number quite on it, but with the new FMLA, we do put increases into our teachers-on-call, which can be our sub-cost, but there is potentials to be, you know, it's going to go into a cycle, more cost to now have the employee allocate to pay them the substitute along term subs with that, so. There is some cost adds on the horizon that will definitely impact the district's budget.
So with that all said, one of the biggest things was obviously looking at student enrollment, and we went on the conservative side with a drop of 16 students, which is roughly $160,000, just to give you an idea of what that number would be, and then you add in all of the other dollars as well, and the number that we had landed on to bring to the board for accepting would be $700,000 in cuts going into next fiscal year. And the idea would be to bring back a list of cuts in a few weeks on September 8th, and we'd have to schedule a special meeting, and that's what the second agenda item is for that. Absentee voting begins on September 19th?
Private.
I'm getting these dates down. And so the idea would be to have the board pass the actual cuts that we have at a special meeting on September 8th, is what I'm going to recommend, and then that way, it would give us time to finalize the informational sheets that we would send out to the community and get the demand ahead of that. So what I'm asking the board to, for tonight, is approval to bring back $700,000 in cuts.
Just go with the plan to keep our general fund growing a little bit, or is that keeping it even? Or that's still just, that's throwing a shot at the, or a dart at the dartboard?
I think that it allows maybe not have to dip into the general fund as needed, but I don't think it's going to move the needle much forward. It's not a plan that allows for building that fund balance up. We looked at items that are going to be increases over the current budget, and what we need to do to have to reduce or to break essentially with that. If the referendum were to pass, just rough numbers, a $950 per pupil referendum, if you ever take, say, 1,000 kids, $950,000 would come into the district if that were to pass. There would still need to be an effort to look at doing right-size cuts. If you have 16 kids leaving the district, there might have to be some, you know, just responsible, you know, downsizing potentially in a lot of the areas, but, no, this, the number that the admin has brought is not a number that would increase the dividend fund balance.
Are we accounting for some unknowns? I mean, I was just hearing before the board meeting about some different things that happened over the weekend with some equipment that possibly may be replaced. How much money of that 700 is possibly set aside for that?
Well, each year we've got LTF, LTFM dollars, and we try as we book up the year, divying those dollars out where needed, and then usually kind of what ends up, if we have some funds left, we get, find some bigger products done at the end of the summer. For instance, the concrete at the elementary this last year, we were able to get that done. So there is a little bit of plan there, but it would mean foregoing something else potentially, whether it be a schedule of the payment, whether it be resurface or seal coat, whatever, and we have to adjust some things. So you kind of get into that needs versus wants as the year rolls closer to the end.
Right.
When do we get, with that 16-student drop, when do we have a count usually for, what enrollment is for the school?
You know, officially, you're not going to get it until the October after the fiscal year. Mars finally gets all cleaned up, and if the, the real issue is, it's an ADM, so average day of membership, you're on actual count on September 19th, is the number of kids. The more often the kids have for class, and they come in and go as parents move kids around, that number fluctuates significantly, so what we kind of do is we take a snapshot in time, look at what the outgoing senior class would be compared to the incoming kindergarten to make an estimate, and that's how you get to that 16 ballpark.
Okay.
And this number also, I reserve that we would make more cuts in the springtime if we need to, if we feel that 700 isn't going to be enough, you know, so keep that in mind. This is an initial number.
Right.
To start with.
Is there anything wrong with going further? And not necessarily, you know, maybe 700,000 is the number we have in mind, but approving more, because I know we just went through this, we approved 500,000 and cut 800, so we had another meeting for that. Is there anything against just having a, a 700 is our number, but we'll approve, so maybe prevents another meeting from happening, or?
We can go up to 800,000 if you want to, I mean, we're hitting bone right now, you know, that's the tough part, is if we make some preemptive cuts, and, you know, we're going to be starting affecting programming here very shortly. You know, we can talk about class sizes, whatever else, but, you know, programming is a big step into anything further, I mean, programming is the reason why kids come here, you know? When you look at it from that standpoint. And class sizes are a big thing also as well, but we start getting into programming, that when you start taking a look at, you know, something that was here, I don't know when that got cut, but FACS, for example, Family Consumer Science, it was cut at some point, it hasn't been brought back.
Right.
So when you make cuts to programs, that's often tough to bring it back. And we have a lot of programs here that you will see in the South Metro area, and it allows kids, our kids, to participate in a lot of different options here. We've been very successful with that over the years. You start touching those programs, that's what makes us competitive with those South Metro schools. And not only in activities, but in academics as well, and what we are.
So we're down on 16, so is that smaller class size coming in, and compared to the bigger, a bigger one going out?
Well, when we did the numbers, and Josh, you used it off of NDE.
Yep.
A number off of the Department of Ed, and so we're going off of the system that they pay us off of, if that makes sense.
Oh, okay.
We went with a more conservative number.
Sure.
As opposed to what, you know, we're seeing in butts and seats.
I was going to say a different word, and I remembered, I was at a public meeting, so.
But 700 is the number that we landed on. If the board wants to go more than that, we will certainly bring back items for you to consider, but 700 is what we landed on.
I think it would be good to understand what is that threshold, that safety net, you know, we brought up, is what does 800,000 look like, so we can be preemptive, is that one?
Well, and maybe that's what we do, is we bring back 800,000, if that's with the direction that the board wants to go, we could bring 800, and if you only decide to cut 700, you know, that night, at least we're back to where we were at.
Because at what point do the programs that make us competitive that we offer start to get cut? Is that 750, is it 775, right? It'd be, I would leverage that number to help us socialize that with the community.
And keep in mind, your bigger, your biggest numbers are going to come from staff, and so, you know, you can, I don't know, if you cut, you know, going back to the FACS example, you know, you cut the FACS program, your, most of your cost is going to come from staffing that position, but it's still a full program of options for kids to take and explore from that standpoint.
And I guess, thinking on the flip side too, if we, if we go to 800,000, and then the referendum is a pass, but we cut 700,000, what does that look like to the voters? Do they think that we're gouging in a way, or, you know?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I think personally, if the admins are recommending 700 at this point, we just keep it at that, and if we have to change, then we will go ahead and do that, but.
I would almost rather, you know, if you cut the 700,000, you could come back in the springtime, and if we need to cut more, we can cut more, depending on what we know then, as opposed to, you know, six months early, you know, trying to make decisions. But this is the best number that we have right now at this point.
Stephen and Tim, is there anything that you guys want to add at all, discussion-wise?
From my end of things, scheduling-wise, it's really tough to look at staff reductions that affect core classes at this point. So we're basically a three-section school, so in other words, every core class, or, you know, every core class that kids take, or there's three sections of those. I can't, given our class sizes, can't go below that without making a number 40, 45, which isn't good for kids. We also just don't have the space to put that many kids in the classroom, which means any reduction I make, if we're looking then at that like extracurricular, or not extracurriculars,
Electives?
Electives, thank you. And at this point, given the number of people I have teaching electives, we're talking about losing a department, so I've got one business teacher, I've got 1.4 art teachers, I've got one ag teacher, one industrial arts teacher, so if we start making reductions in those areas, then I'm looking at eliminating a whole department, which is going to push kids more into online, which is going to affect our, you know, our enrollment numbers, so we're just really, like Jeff said, we're to the bone now, and, you know, big numbers, which we may have to do anyway, depending on how the referendum vote goes, we're just at looking at cutting programming for students, and as much as possible, we would like to not do that, but we also, if we have to, then we have to, and we'll have to make some hard decisions on that.
Nothing particular, just right now, the class sizes are still kind, I mean, we've got a general idea, but since August 1st, we've seen a big change in a couple different grades. grades, fourth grade up to ninety-seven kids right now. So thank you, by the way, this brings for adding another section to that. But.
That would have been really good with three, huh?
Yeah. So they're, they've added over, they were already big, they added quite a bit more just in the last month. Just in the last like four days, we gained one first grader, but then lost two. Couple weeks ago, administratively, we were talking about our kindergarten numbers, and we have, at the time, we had five kindergarten kids whose siblings go here, who attended preschool, it's just the parents hadn't gotten back the registration paperwork yet. So the number we were looking at was here, but realistically, I think we're going to end up here. And we've got four of those back now, so we're just waiting on the parents finalizing the numbers, you know what I mean? So, um, two weeks from now, we'll know a lot more on that.
May I ask, what is our incoming kindergarten class size?
Right now, the ones, well, we got one today, I'm not sure if we have entered or not, it's right around seventy right now. So it was, I think, one day at administrative, we were talking about sixty-five or sixty-six, and we were waiting on five still, and four of those have come in.
We need these housing developments to get completed, and we need people to have kits.
Enrollment right now is, is even as close as we are to the school year starting, is a little tough to predict. We generally see bigger numbers of people who are coming to Cannon, we'll start to see the ones who are not coming back, you know, next week more so than we are right now. So I think when I looked last week at admin, we were up. But again, it's hard to predict right now, to know where we're going to end up.
Just speaking on numbers a little bit, I did get a handwritten card from Courtney Hobel for our three-year-old for preschool. I thought that was a nice touch. And may have been doing it all along, and I never saw it, but I thought that was a good thing to connect with, you know, whatever family is out there when they got, you know, young kids that are potentially coming to Cannon Falls. Props to you guys. All right, any more questions for any of our admin team? Else I would look for a motion, and if you make a motion, please state what dollar it amount.
I'll make a motion to go with the administration's suggestion of seven hundred thousand dollars in reductions for next year, fiscal year twenty-seven.
Look with a motion for the approval of seven hundred thousand dollars for the, or the recommendation for seven hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-seven reduction.
I'll second this.
Jody on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to set a special meeting date for fiscal year twenty-seven reduction recommendations.
This goes back to the first agenda item that I just talked about, and I am recommending that we have a special meeting on September eighth, of one, one agenda item to finalize the cuts for next fiscal year.
I was just going to ask, if we do that date, is majority view available to do one that morning?
Yes.
I'm just trying to avoid a couple of kids that have sports, but if that doesn't work for everyone else, I won't be here at a regular time if we wanted, but else, if we could do.
I would gladly move my dentist to come in.
I'm good with that. I wasn't even going to ask you. You're the one that wants us to date, so I just figured you're open the entire day. Does, seven or seven-thirty or something?
Yeah.
What, what do you prefer, Jeff, or doesn't matter?
I'm here at seven.
You guys prefer?
Seven.
Seven, get over with?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I'd look for a motion to set a special meeting for September eighth at seven AM.
I'll make a motion to set the special meeting for the reduction for September eighth at seven AM.
Rondi on the motion.
I will second.
Pete on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to approve a leave in accordance with the teacher's master agreement, Article ten, Leaves of Absence, Section seven, childcare leave from February second of twenty-six to April thirtieth of twenty-six.
This is for Morgan Schwartz, and I recommend approval.
Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Rondi on the motion.
I'll, Jody.
Jody, sorry.
I'll, I'll do the second.
Rondi on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to approve a leave in accordance with teacher's master's agreement, Article ten, Leaves of Absence, Section seven, childcare leave from January twelfth of twenty-six to April fifth of twenty-six.
This is for Jade Franzen, and I recommend approval.
I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Pete on the motion.
Second.
Luke on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to approve a leave in accordance with teacher's master agreement, Article ten, Leaves of Absence, Section seven, childcare leave from January fifth of twenty-six to March twenty-ninth of twenty-six.
This is for Megan Lampman, and I recommend approval.
I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Rondi on the motion.
I will second.
Pete on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to approve a leave in accordance with the teacher's master agreement, Article ten, Leaves of Absence, Section seven, childcare leave from February twenty-fifth of twenty-six to the end of the school year.
This is for Becca Schmollenberg, and I recommend approval.
I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Jody on the motion.
Second.
Luke on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. All right, something different. Consideration to approve the updated twenty-five to twenty-six fall coaching list.
Uh, Josh Olson was added to junior high assistant football, and that is paid for by the booster, so we would get a donation, and then we would end up paying them, recommend approving this change.
I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Luke on the motion.
I will second.
Pete on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to approve a softball fundraiser, which would be a youth basketball tournament.
Softball is taken over, or?
Not taken over, just being.
Involved?
Just be a new tournament in town.
Okay.
For, for youth grades third through sixth, boys and girls. We are working, we, oh yeah, just looking for the dates of the sixth and, and seventh of, of December as, as our dates to do that, and just the youth tournament, who should have handled concessions and admissions. And it'll look hopefully similar to the CFY tournament, although I don't feel, we'll fill it out like the CFY does, but just.
Do it slowly over time?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I recommend approval on this.
I'll make a motion. Pete on the motion.
I'll second.
Rondi on the second. I'll just add, I love hearing anything that uses our facilities and involves kids, and thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to approve a spring trip to Florida for softball. Adam, you want to explain that?
Yep. So basically, baseball has presented a similar trip, we're just piggybacking what they've done. They went in twenty-twenty-four, and they're going again this spring. So the same facility they go to has a softball complex in the same area, with, I think, a minimum of four softball fields. And so we've talked to Bucky quite a bit about it now, he kind of set up his plan and his estimates for, for costs, so we feel like we'll have the funds to cover it, and we're going to basically overlap them for the most part, you know, they might go down on Sunday or Monday, and we might be one day off or whatever, but it would kind of just be over spring break. Try to do two scrimmages, and then like four days of practice is kind of what we're looking at doing. So we'll be inviting all girls in ninth through twelve, so if everyone that played last year would say yes and go, we're looking at twenty-three kids. So hopefully we get a few more kids to join softball and get the number up to twenty-six eight kids, but, um, yeah.
And that's for this, sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say, how many chaprooms?
Uh, right now, we'd be looking at probably four to six, depending on, you know, how many kids go. So, sure, if we had twenty, yeah, we try to, like, so for bus transportation, we got to have at least one for seven kids to drive. We're looking at options to do like passenger vans and have them there, but I think if, if they still have room at what they call the villas on site, I would like to just have the team stay there, you know, kind of as one, which then we might be able to just get like a charter bus to get us there, and, you know, just be there for four days and then get a charter bus back to the airport. So that'll be dependent on if the, the villas are still available. As of last week, they had nineteen rooms, which we would be.
Be a Cannon Falls takeover down there.
Yeah, yeah, we're coming to play ball.
And that's for this coming spring?
Yes.
Because typically, Bucky does it a year out, right? And he laps on, or is what you feel good about?
Yeah, we had some fundraising stuff that was a little excess from before I took over. Uh, we've had a couple of really nice donations, and then our fundraiser from last spring was extremely successful, so I feel we're probably, like, based on a number of twenty kids, are probably close to half, half funded. And then we're going to do the basketball tournament coming up. We would have a couple opportunities to ask for some more donations than I have donated to baseball in the past, and then try to work out like the CFY basketball tournament, concession opportunities. So we kind of got a lot of this of ideas to raise, any, any additional funds if need be sweet.
It's great opportunity for girls.
I know there was openings of the, for the concessions for the winter sports last year towards the end of the year, so.
Yeah, I just kind of, we just met with Bucky last week, and he gave us like the whole template of, you know, he's a math guy, right? So we have all the numbers, and we're just going to kind of, you know, if approved, we would lay out to the families, like, you know, here's, here's a, um, you know, what the trip looks like is in terms of dollars, is how much you can earn. I got a fall softball camp, we're going to try to get launched here soon, a little spring softball camp, so kids should have hopefully five or six different opportunities to raise extra money. And then they'll have a dollar amount, they want to choose to not do those things and just straightforward, they can do that too. So we can kind of play that out per his spreadsheet, just with our, our lingo on it, so.
I think it's great, I know baseball's done it, and baseball did it years back as well, like, has there ever been a softball team that's gone on a trip?
Not that one.
Yeah, this is awesome.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Well, I appreciate all the work that you're doing with the team and helping coordinate that and giving our kids more opportunities, so. No more questions for Adam, I would look for a motion to approve the, a spring trip to Florida for the softball team.
I'll move to approve.
Luke on the motion.
I'll second.
Rondi on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to approve the twenty-five to twenty-six restrictive procedures plan.
Uh, this is an every-year plan that needs to be presented to the school board, it is from GCEV, and it does affect Cannon Falls and how we do restrictive procedures. So we don't want to take any questions that you have on that, but we do need approval of this moving to next week.
Can you just explain, is there any, you said this is an annual approval, is there anything that's changed from prior years on this plan?
No, it's. I don't, no, yeah, because I think it came from without any changes, because the legislature didn't make any changes to holds this past year, but I believe in the session before they did with holds. So nothing has changed from last year. Yeah, seclusion was probably the biggest thing that was changed two years ago.
Okay.
Any other questions on the restrictive procedure plan? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Jody on the motion.
I will second.
Pete on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to set the truth and taxation hearing date, December fifteenth of twenty-five at six o'clock in the boardroom at East, eight-twenty East Minnesota Street.
Uh, this is a yearly event that we have to hold to inform taxpayers on what their set tax rate will be for this, for the following calendar year, starting on December first, or on January first.
Any discussion on that at all? Any questions for Jeff?
This is just approval to have a meeting, correct?
Yep. We have to notify the public of when that meeting is.
I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Rondi on the motion.
I'll second.
Jody on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. Consideration to approve the resolution appointing election judges and absentee ballot board members for the November fourth of twenty-five, school district's special election.
Uh, as we mentioned earlier, the absentee ballot, uh, election will start on September nineteenth for the November fourth election, and so the district does need to hire the list of judges that are listed here, and approve the ballot board judge, or ballot board group as well. Did I say that correctly, Lori?
I was just wondering, do we get any discounts for the school employees?
Large.
And this is a resolution, so you need to.
Right.
Do we need to?
You guys feel good about the judge training, or the election training? That went good?
I wouldn't go down a rabbit hole too far with her on questions.
All right, if there's no questions, I would look for a motion to approve the resolution appointing election judges and absentee ballot board members for the special election on November fourth. I'll make the motion to approve. Luke on the motion.
I will second.
Go ahead, Pete.
I will second.
Pete on the second, and since Joe Lynn's here, I've asked Luke if he would take care of reading the resolution.
Yeah. Be resolved by the school board of independent school district number two fifty-two, Minnesota, as follows, is hereby found, determined, and declared as follows. One, the following individuals, each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge, are hereby appointed as judges of election for the school district's special election on November fourth, twenty-twenty-five, to act as such at the polling place listed below. Cannon Falls City Hall, nine eighteen River Road, Cannon Falls, Minnesota, five-five-zero-zero-nine. Head election judge, Sarah Peer, assistants, Michelle Sandine, Ellen Hartman, Terry Soul, Michelle Zimmerman, Christie Tipton, Josh Davison, and Lori Hanson. And I'll take a roll call vote. Jody?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Clinton?
Yes.
Myself is a yes.
All right, thank you, Luke. All right, that does it for this portion of the meeting. Coming up, uh, next board meeting is, well, we're going to have that special election, or special meeting on the eighth, and that will be at seven o'clock in the morning, and then the next, next regular school board meeting will be on September twenty-second at six o'clock, hopefully back in the boardroom. And those are a few items that could potentially be on that agenda. If anyone has anything that they'd like added, make sure you contact Jeff or Lori, and we will try to get that put on. If no one has anything else to add? will try to get that put on. If no one has anything else to add, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Rondi with a motion.
Second.
Luke with the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.